Good evening, Ward County. My name is Tom Rafferty and I will be moderating tonight's forum, candidate forum, for the Ward County Commissioners. We have, we're gonna hear from four candidates for the Ward County Commission. Two of the four will win a seat on the commission for a four-year term. First of all, I want to thank all the candidates for participating in this election and being willing to serve your communities. It sure is an important job and we need people to step up. So, the election is November 8th and there's early voting also. You can find more information on how to vote and where to vote on different sites. The Ward County site has information as well as the Secretary of State's website. So, go out and vote. With that, we'll get right into questions. I have some that have already been submitted. We have some of our own and you can submit them online, I understand? You can type them in or send them in and we'll, we'll take as many as we can in our one and a half hours. So, we'll be done at 7:30 tonight. So, we'll start out with introductions and we'll give you a minute and a half. We'll start with John Feldahl.
Good evening. Thanks for the invitation. Good evening. Thanks for the invitation tonight. My name is John Feldahl. I live south of Berthold, about 24 miles west of Minot. I've been county commissioner, finishing up my fourth term currently. I farm with my wife and we also have a small construction business. I've been doing that for the most part, most all of our lives. I've served on several boards throughout the community and in the county for farm organizations and cooperatives and served on the Berthold School Board for a period of time, a few years back now. So, got quite a bit of board experience and I guess I decided to run again after visiting with my wife with the issues going on in society today. I, I think it's important that we take the time to serve our communities and I will work to do due diligence on all the issues that come before us as I have previously. So, appreciate being here tonight and I would ask for your vote.
Thank you. And I did select an order beforehand randomly, so if you're wondering how I'm choosing who's going. Next, I have Alan Walter.
I'm Alan Walter and I thank you for having this forum for us tonight, bring forth some of the issues that we have with the county. I've been a resident of Ward County and the city of Minot my whole life. I graduated from high school here, graduated from Minot State. I was in the National Guard for six years stint and I have been on a number of boards.
In this race, I mean, because you have a Bismarck political action committee funding guys as being city candidates or representing the city. I don't want to start a mud fight here, but I mean, you do have a Bismarck political action committee putting up signs and funding two campaigns here. As running as city candidates, so we do probably need to look at it.
Okay, next will be John Feldahl.
This is an interesting question that's been talked about quite a bit. I've had people comment on it. Just a little bit of information, some of the things I've learned since this is Harrison Township. Minnet is mostly in Harrison Township. And Harrison Township has between forty and forty-five thousand people in it. So I would guess you would say those people kind of do represent the city of Minnet, even though they're not Minnet residents. I've also served on the commission where I was the only rural commissioner too. This is my fourth term. This has never been an issue before. And every census, it's up to the chairman of the commission to call for a meeting, whether we want to create districts or eliminate districts. I was chairman last year in December and I called for that meeting. I, not everybody wanted to have it. I thought it was a good idea we do that. And the committee's comprised of the mayor of the largest city and one of the mayors of the smaller cities. A member of the township board association, myself, and one other. I don't remember. Anyhow, it was discussed at that meeting. We did have very little input from the public. There were some attended, but this issue never came up. So it was unanimously agreed to by the mayor and those at that time to not go forward with it. If we had decided to, it would have been put up to a vote. So I don't think there's been problems with it. I think some of the topics coming up recently have created this discussion, but we're not always going to agree on everything all the time. So I think it's been working fine. I've been on it both ways.
Okay, Alan.
Thank you. I'm not, I'm not looking at this as a urban versus rural. I'm looking at this as representing all the people. The decisions and some of the issues that come before the county commission affect all of the citizens in this, in this county. As far as districts, forming a district, I had conversations and I was on the, on the commission before with the people about forming a district. And if there was districts going to be formed, it would be based on population. And to do that, city of Minnet would be the center of that population and it would go out from the center in a pie-shaped form. So all of the districts would be coming out of the center of the city of Minnet. So your big, big majority of the votes would be right in the city of Minnet with that. So a district, a district for Ward County would have to be shaped like that and I don't know that that would be the best, the best scenario for the county.
Okay, next question. So the Big M Building made the news about the tax increment financing. What is your stance on TIF and/or property tax breaks? And we'll start with Lance.
I guess I'm sort of an anti-tax guy and, and I, I don't want to put the burden of some building or somebody else not paying taxes on the back of somebody else paying taxes, so. I don't know, I recently said in the paper that I, I'm sort of undecided on that. I'm still sort of undecided on that. But even though they're not collecting from those, those putting money into the Big M Building for eight years or whatever it is, I'm still not exactly excited about putting it, the burden of taxes on everybody else to cover those taxes from the, even though the building needs to, something needs to be done downtown with it.
Okay. Next is John.
Pushing my button there. This is one of the hot topic buttons and I assume is, is going to surface again, from what I understand. So I also don't think that we should. The county has granted tax incentives to promote businesses, both in and out of Minnet, throughout the county at times. The county's never, to my knowledge, since I've been a commissioner, borrowed funds to help offset the cost of construction of businesses. That was my main objection to me not supporting the TIF. There's been several TIFs that have happened in Minnet that never came to the county. Five-year TIFs don't have to. This one here was a twenty-year TIF and so it led to, in my opinion, it required a lot more research. The five-year TIFs were never, they didn't have to go to any taxing entities to get permission to do it. State law requires with twenty-year TIFs that they should contact, I think, the top four tax requesters, so. I think if the county's going to participate in this going forward, at least at the county side of things, we should develop a policy so we're consistent with it, whether we're going to go through with that. And I don't like taking these things one item at a time because to be fair to the rest of the taxpayers in the county, not everybody can request a, automatically request a tax write-off or incentive for their property. So there's policies and laws that allow that, so I think we should do that, develop a policy county-wide before we get any further into it.
Okay, next, Alan.
Well, this all started with the Big M Building on this TIF issue. And for me, it seemed like it would be a no-brainer, because what if, what if the company that owned that quit paying taxes on it? And they didn't pay them for three or four years. The county would end up with that building and it would be a county liability then. With the TIF, the company that's doing it is, is getting a tax increment to help pay for the construction that's going to be going on there. And as I understand it, it's fourteen and a half million dollar project. They're starting on it right now. And the increase in the taxes at the end are going to help pay for the construction loan that was placed out there. I don't, I don't disagree with John that there should be a policy developed for the county for, for these issues. It'd be a good idea. But for, we don't have that policy in place and for the Big M Building to go forward, I thought it was a no-brainer that it should be approved and, and go. Because that building's been sitting empty for a lot of years, not being used and not will be being used, so.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, Jason.
So I started attending some county commission meetings this spring just to sort of prepare for this campaign. And this issue was one of the one, buttons, hot-button issues, as John said, that came up at the time. And I learned more about TIFs just going to a few of those meetings and listening to those presentations than I would have ever known before. But the TIFs are limited on what you can, when you can request them. And one of them is to deal with a blighted building. And in that particular case, I mean, it was really in the details where that building had been behind on taxes. It had been basically vacant for twenty years. The worst-case scenario was that it was going to end up back in the hands, or not back, but it would become the property of Ward County because of delinquent taxes. And it had asbestos issues that was going to make it a huge burden on the taxpayers to take possession of that building. And so the details of that TIF I paid very close attention to and it made sense. The presentation was a benefit. It was a win for the taxpayers. It was a win for the developer. And one of the requirements of a TIF is that this project isn't viable without it. So in other words, to, for the developers to make that project go, they needed the TIF to make it go. And if they hadn't done it, that building would continue to sit. And who knows how long it would sit? And like I said, the worst-case scenario, it ends up as a county building and they are dealt with, left with dealing with a building that's full of asbestos that's sitting there empty. So I thought it was a win-win.
Okay, thank you. We'll do a question from the audience here. Do you feel that outlying areas are chipping in enough for the basin-wide flood protection project? And we start with John this time. Do you feel that outlying areas are chipping in enough for the basin-wide flood protection project? So flood control.
I, I can speak for what the county does. And I believe we granted or authorized in our budget six hundred and fifty thousand towards Service Service Joint Board for the project. So that money comes from everybody. I, I don't know what you mean by how we contribute more. We, the county has, when it flooded in the outlying areas, the county was responsible for servicing the people outside the city of Minnet. The city of Minnet had their staff working within the city of Minnet to get things back in shape. The county had to repair a lot of roads, both with FEMA dollars, a lot of it, but, and the county also had to replace some, including county roads with our local tax dollars too. So do I feel the rural areas are contributing more or enough towards this? I don't know how to answer that. I don't know how much of this is being done with local tax dollars, sales taxes collected by the city of Minnet, if they choose to use that for part of this project. That don't just come from the people that live in Minnet. It comes from people even outside of this county. So there's a wide area that contribute to this. And I know as far as a county commissioner, we also contribute with tax dollars from everybody in the county.
Okay, Alan.
Okay, so the question is, do the outlying areas around the city of Minnet pay for, pay enough for the flood control that's being done? First of all, the flood control is being paid by federal, state, and local tax dollars. The local tax dollars are generated by the one-cent sales tax, one of the one-cent sales tax that the city has. That sales tax is paid for by everybody that comes to this city and buys goods in this city. So at one point, when that sales tax was first started, there was a study done on how much was coming from outside of the city of Minnet. And at that time, it was like fifty-one percent was coming from, without the city of Minnet. I don't know what it is today. I suspect it's less than that, but still, they're paying a good share. The citizens all around our community, all around our region are paying into that sales tax, which pays for the flood control, the local share of the flood control. When Trinity started their hospital project years ago, I was on a committee looking at that. And I asked the question about what Trinity thought their population was that they serviced. And they told me it was, well, they told the committee it was a hundred and eighty-five thousand people. So this, this community is serving a hundred and eighty-five thousand people. And a good share of those people come here and do their shopping and they're paying that one-cent sales tax. And that's the sales tax that's being used for the flood control. So yes, I think they are, the outlying areas are paying their share of the flood control project.
Okay, next, Jason.
I agree with what's been said. The federal dollars are contributed by everyone. The state dollars are contributed to by everyone. The sales tax that Minnet has that's sending money towards this project is paid by everyone in the region. And then, as John said, the county is already paying some dollars towards that. So I think it'd be very, not only difficult to come up with a fair mechanism for smaller populations in the First Basin to somehow kick in dollars that would be meaningful. I, the short answer is no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't support any other efforts to have outlying areas pay more.
Lance.
I would agree with, having heard their answers and stuff, agreed, agreed to what they had said. The sales tax in the state and the federal government's all chipping in stuff. I don't know. I'd like to hear more about the complaint or who wanted the outside areas to, and what their complaint is before I give it an official answer. But I, but I would agree with them. That sounds like everybody's already paying, paying their fair share.
Okay, we'll move on to the next question. This is from a, from out in the public somewhere, an emailed question. There were mill levy reductions from the budget. Do you agree with the reductions made? And do you see additional areas in the current budget that could be trimmed or cut? What and where? And this one, we start with Alan.
I, I followed the county's budgeting process a little bit this last summer and fall. I think that they made, they made the reductions that were necessary. I don't know, I haven't looked at the budget close enough to know that there could be other reductions done. I, I can't even say that. I suspect there could be. But I know that I'm fiscally responsible and I, when I'm involved with the budgeting process, I go through that line by line to make sure that the, the things are in line with what's happening and what the needs are for each of the departments. So are there more mill levy reductions that could be done? I can't answer that. Could be, but maybe not. Maybe there should be some increase, but right now, the budget is passed and I don't, I don't know that there'd be any reductions that could be done.
Sure. Jason is next.
So not having the advantage of having gone in detail through the Ward County budget, the only thing I can say is that, in my opinion, the current commission is very fiscally conservative. And I'm very confident that those that were crafting that budget did everything they could to reduce the mills to, as much as they possibly could. So I don't think there could have been further cuts made. And again, I'm not privy to the real details of the budget. I can say that if I am elected, I will also be a very good steward and a very fiscal conservative when it comes to examining the budget and looking for any areas that are wasteful or can be trimmed.
Okay. Lance.
I didn't see the budget either, but I'm always, I'm sure everybody that's on there would agree, there's probably some corner or something that could have been cut extra that they maybe disagreed on, that they went forward with, but there's always something extra that a guy could cut to make sure we don't put it on the burden of the tax, county taxpayers.
Lastly, John.
Yeah, I agree too. We can always cut more, but you got to weigh the impact of that if you go too far. And we did do some cut, fairly significant cuttings. That we cut back the salary increases a little bit. But we're also hopefully going to adopt our new salary policy that will equalize some of this pay. We cut, we could have funded more in the highway department. And we cut the mills by at least one and a half mills from the intent, in the original budget. And we were able to do that because we got some state funding. This county's going to get about five million dollars out of that state funding of the buckets you hear about that fill up with oil revenue. We've been waiting for that for quite a while. So that, we also got about thirteen million dollars ARPA funding that we funded some road projects and county projects that normally would have taken local tax dollars to do. We spread that out throughout the townships and small towns through an application process that should upgrade some of their local sewer and water issues and also for graveling and things like that for township roads. So we were able to keep our budget down. It's not going to be that easy to do with the rate of inflation going forward. But I think we did a pretty good job of managing the budget we had and hopefully we'll accomplish a lot of good things with it.
Okay. This one's, I'm not sure how to address this one, but it was regarding the, the Bismarck Brighter Future Alliance or whatever it was called. Alan did briefly address it, but we have, you know, another request to, to just explain, do you guys know about this group? What do you know about it? Are you running together? And we'll start with Jason.
So the short answer is no, we didn't know about it and no, we're not running together. That, it was a surprise to me when I saw signs with Alan Walter and my name on them. Now, I will say, I'm happy to have people that are supporting my candidacy. So I don't want to misconstrue that I'm ungrateful for people that want to support my candidacy. But I've never heard of the Brighter Future Alliance prior to this. I don't know Pat Finken. I've never met him. He's the chair of that alliance. The nature of that PAC is such that you really have no transparency on who is donating dollars towards that. But Alan and I certainly didn't come up with any plan to run as a team. So this is completely from outside of our control. But on the same token, I'm, like I said, I'm happy to have support from people that want to support me. I just don't want the public to, to be confused as to where these dollars and where, where this came from. It didn't come from us.
Okay. Lance, do you want to, do you have anything to speak about it, if you know anything about it?
Well, I mean, it's been, they've been targeting districts and this is the first Ward County race that they've targeted sort of, and it really dirties up the water stuff. And they've been, I don't know how the county pushes back on this. And it makes these two look bad, bad too, if they didn't know anything about it. I mean, but they're saying sort of the same thing that Alan had said too, that they're, they're running for the city or these two guys are representing the city, when you have other people on the committee representing the city too. Shelley's been on every board in town for twenty years and Rosssted's on the school board and stuff. And they sort of target conservatives or guys they don't like, and I don't like that. There's a bunch of them around. It, it's dirty money. I, that's what I call it anyway. Not, but it is legal. So for them to do that, it's never been done before. I don't know how the county pushes back, but I want, certainly want the county to know what's going on and how we, how we take care of that, I guess.
Okay, John, do you have anything to add?
No, I assume that most of the targeting is towards me and everything, the purpose of this is all based on assumptions so far. I don't know sometimes why these individuals do this. It's not one person. I've learned, done a little investigating on how these PACs are created and I think maybe we better look at what's going on in this state. I, I don't know if it's dirty politics, but it's politics at its worst. And when we got people outside of this, it's one thing to hear about the state and federal races being influenced by outside money. It's quite another thing to come down to the level of county commissioners and we got outside money coming in here. Trying to affect things for what? And we really don't know what this is. I got my opinions, what's caused this, because of some of the issues that we've dealt with recently, but I, I can't say that off top. I had, I hope it don't continue. I don't think it's a good process.
Okay, Alan, do you, give you another crack at it too?
Alan didn't say it was an urban versus rural issue. Want to make that statement clear. Like Jason, I know nothing about this. Like I said before, I know Pat Finken from twenty years ago. I haven't talked to him for at least that long. Where, who's involved and where this comes from, I don't have any ideas, so. But like Jason, I appreciate any support I can get of running for a county commission, so.
Thank you.
Sure.
If I could just add one more thing on this issue. You know, as soon as I saw those ads, I contacted John and I told him it was going on and that I had nothing to do with it. And the other thing, I went to Minnet Daily News and told them, I said, would you please run an article and explain that I had nothing to do with this? And as far as I knew, Alan didn't either. And they ran that story. So that information has been put out. And the last thing I'd like to say is just on my campaign, I haven't accepted any funds from, other than two hundred dollars from two good friends. That's the only campaign contributions I have accepted. Otherwise, I have self-funded my campaign and I'm not beholden to any special interest group whatsoever.
Okay. Anyone else want to rebut, since I let Jason?
I guess if they were, I would have picked me to put me on the billboard and stuff, I'd be asking myself why. And I'd be asking, telling the Ward County people to ask why too. I mean, I voted for one of these two in, in the primary earlier on these billboards and stuff. And I don't know if I'll do that just because of that, because I know they're, they're targeting districts and areas throughout the state and stuff, and I don't think it's right.
Okay. Go ahead, John.
I'll just say one brief thing is, I have no other choice. I believe what these guys are saying. I don't know how the movement started, I guess. But if somebody was doing that to me without my permission, I'd have a conversation with them. Have you guys?
Alan?
No, I have not. Like I said, I haven't talked to Pat Finken for twenty years, so I don't. I don't even know how to get a hold of him.
Well, that's what makes it muddy too. He says he knows these two and they say they don't know him or haven't talked to him in twenty years. So I mean, I'm not picking on these guys, but somehow we need to push back against the brighter future. And any votes, I mean, that they cast on the Ward County, somewhat they'll be asking, I mean, there'll be questions asked whether they, I mean, if, was that support for that reason or not, so.
Okay, I think we'll move on. What do I got next? We'll do a, maybe a little easier one, maybe not though. This is from the audience. Do you think we should have, I think they're saying, should we have both a city and county library? It would save, they're, they're saying six hundred thousand dollars. Or should we merge? Should we merge the city and county libraries? It would have saved six hundred thousand dollars in ten years if we had done it when, when the idea was first studied. And this is from an audience, so I don't know if that, that figure is correct or not. And we'll start with Lance on this one.
I certainly use both libraries, but I can see where they have a point. If we could build a, or have a bigger, better library, I think it would be worth investigating.
Uh, John?
Yeah, this issue come up, I don't know, four or five years ago, maybe a little longer. I wasn't a supporter of it at that time. We did have a few meetings. I think Alan was on one of, maybe a committee member that worked on it. I think it should be evaluated every so often. There's a, just so you know though, there's a good bit of people in the rural areas mostly that are afraid if we do that, we're going to lose services in the rural area in the name of saving money. And that's the concern that drove me not to support it at that time. There was ideas of how they were going to rearrange things and stuff. And until those things are at a comfort level for everybody and addressed, I, I think it should stay as it is, but I'm not saying it shouldn't be looked at again. It's costing more and more money all the time to run both libraries. This one, sounds like they need to do some renovations. Ours is new. We're buying a new bookmobile here shortly. So it's expensive. It, it could be to talk about it again.
Okay, Alan, you're next.
I, when I was on the commission before, we did look at this and that was like the third or fourth time that it had been looked at over the years to combine the two libraries. As I said, I wasn't on the committee at that time, but I was on the commission and, and I think Jim Rosssted was the one that headed it up. And it was, it was given some pretty And it was, it was given some pretty serious thought, but in the end it come down that we wouldn't. I, I made a recommendation that we continue to study it a little further, but that didn't pass. And we, the commission then denied going any further with it, so. But as John said, I think it should be looked at periodically and see if there could be some savings done. And, and address the issues then that come up with the bookmobile. The big bookmobile was, I think, the biggest concern, getting the service out to the smaller communities with the bookmobile. But I think those issues could be handled, but should be looked at again.
Okay. Uh, Jason?
Well, without rehashing what's already been said, to me, if you can save taxpayer dollars, you can provide excellent service. The real key there is just making sure that rural residents don't lose anything. So, I think you'd have to just set that up in the govern, governance of the, the new library to make sure that all parties are represented and no, and no services are lost. But otherwise, it seems to be a, a good idea when governments can work together for the common good and save us some money.
All right. So, the next question, I know at least a few of you have mentioned that we need to improve our election system in the county. So, what, if anything, do we need to invest in or change? And we start with John on this one.
There's a lot, there's a lot of discussion about the election process. And I don't think North Dakota is as bad as many parts of this country, but there are some people concerned about it. I wish that the county, we could have more in-person voting precincts. We've gotten less over the years. And one of the problems, we've been told by our auditors, is getting people to work the elections. I still think, I know it's inconvenient, I still think the in-person voting is the most reliable method you can have with, without having any interference by any other entity. And so, this year, the county has only got early voting for a week where it's been longer at times before. I, as chairman, the chairman of the commission serves on the canvassing board at these elections. So, I've done it a couple of times in my life. And the last one, I was concerned when we incorporated these new machines and stuff. And some of the questions that the public's been raising about the software in those machines and stuff are valid questions. And I don't know why we used outdated software in them systems when we're running a new system. We, we couldn't even run that. We were told at the county level, we had to get rid of that software for our own purposes, so.
Sorry.
Those kinds of things need to be addressed.
Okay. Um, next, Alan?
I, I think it should be in-person voting, period. A lot of countries in the world do that, have just as many or more people than we do. And they're, they're accomplishing it without a bunch of computers and a bunch of shenanigans going on. We did get new machines, as John said, about two, three years ago. Something like that, before the last election and had the program. But it's quite a process going through those machines and getting them set up so that they are counting the ballots right. They're tested, every one of them are tested before they're set out to be used. But I'm in favor personally of having in-person voting and get it done in one day. Always used to do it, we can still do it. Just a matter of having the will to do it.
Okay. Uh, Jason, you're next.
You know, I generally agree with Alan. I, election integrity is key to our democracy. If people do not trust that the election is on the fair and square, then we, we're going to really lose confidence in our, our governing bodies. So, I realize there's been absentee ballots forever. And I think there are people that can't get out and vote. And they need, they have a right to vote as well, so that we have to account for that. But we need to make sure that our, our cybersecurity, our election software is state of the art. And we have to have absolutely no doubt about the integrity of our elections. And I, I also prefer in-person voting because that is a way of being able to ensure that that person is the person voting and that they are only voting once.
Okay. Lance?
I agree with what was said too, but I still want everybody to have the opportunity to vote throughout the county. But I too want to keep it as safe as possible. And the software needs to be inspected and we need to look in the future how, how possibly changes all be and be ahead of the curve, not behind the curve on elections and stuff, because it is so important for us as a county.
Okay.
To that.
Sure.
I, I agree with what he said too. We don't want to get rid of absentee ballots. One of the things that most people probably don't know, it's been in the news lately though. During the election, during the COVID times, what created a lot of this. We had money sent to the county around 80, 90, somewhere, $80,000 to help with the elections. And I'm proud to say this is, when we found out where the money come from, proud to say this is one of the few counties that sent the money back. And that, the way I look at that, that was just another attempt to influence elections and that should not happen. Many places took the money.
Do any of you three want another chance, since I gave John a chance? You're good? Okay. This next one, now, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I believe county employees got a three and a half percent raise. And I know some wanted more. What, what's the solution to this issue? You know, everybody's facing, facing inflation. Uh, what do we do to, to retain our county employees? And we start with Alan this time.
I believe the proposal was 5% and it was cut with the budget process to 3.5%. Is that right, John? 3.5%? So, um, they did get an increase, but inflation rate is 8.2 or 3 now. So, uh, with, with the inflation, it's tough. And if it keeps on, it's going to get tougher. And how, how are we going to adjust that on the council, I mean, on the commission is going to be, going to be a big question. It's going to be a big problem. How do we do it? Don't know at this point. But during the budget process, that would be figured out. I don't know, I don't know if there's any of the, like the ARPA money's left anyplace in the state that could be helped with some of the issues that the counties are going to be facing. Because it's not going to be just Ward County that's going to be facing this. It's going to be all of them. It's a, it's a problem that's going to have to be solved and I don't have the answer today.
Okay. Uh, Jason, you're next on this one.
Well, as far as this year's budget, you know, I, I think the commission did what they could while trying to hold the line on property taxes. It's, uh, it is a challenge. I mean, there's just not enough money to go around and hard decisions have to be made. I think as far as retention, you have to look at your, you know, your data on your employees. Are you losing employees? And if you have a, a rate of, of loss of employees, you know, it has to be addressed so that you turn that around. So, you have to have satisfied employees. Ward County employees get good healthcare benefits, they have a good retirement plan. So, uh, the package for them to work there isn't just salary. But it certainly has to keep up. And if you don't keep up, uh, you're just digging a hole for the future to try and catch up later. Uh, I would be hopeful that the legislature will do something to address property taxes. So, there won't be as much pressure on local budgets. Certainly, there are dollars in the legacy fund and in the school trust fund that could be tapped to relieve some pressure on property taxes.
Okay. Lance, you're next.
My first, first thoughts always go to the taxpayers and they got the burden of paying the taxes. And, and they, they got to pay for the increase and stuff too, so, and they're under tough times too. We're looking at tough times ahead. So, that's where my first thoughts go all the time. Do I think they probably cut, did what they had to on the increase? I, I probably think they did, not knowing what times are ahead. But it's going to get tough ahead, I think, for the property tax, tax people too, so.
Okay. Uh, John?
Yeah, like was stated, we started out in our preliminary budget, a 5% increase and cut it to 3.5%. What we also did, getting back to what I said earlier, we've done a salary study a couple of times in the past five years and we just completed one. So, what isn't said is they're going to get a 3.5% increase. And like all the rest of us, all the benefits package are also going up too. And that's an automatic increase that we don't take their benefits away and still give their benefits to them. On top of that, we're also, like I said, will come up Tuesday at our meeting, going to attempt to adopt our salary study, which will be another increase, but it will be taken out of cash carryover. I sit on the, the committee that oversees the employees and that's what we're going to bring to the commission on Tuesday. That'll cost another 80 some thousand dollars, so. It's going to be a little for some, and it's going to, supposed to equalize pay within departments, so. We did the best we could in, in also addressing what it's costing the people that pay for those, so.
Okay.
I think we did the best we could.
So, we talked about tax incentives. Uh, what other, are there other ways we can encourage economic development? What should we be doing as far as economic development as a county? And this one, we start with Jason.
I think it's important to send the message that the county is a business-friendly atmosphere. I think we need to engage in promotion of this area as, as a great place to do business. And we need to have, uh, planning and zoning rules and a tax situation and a workforce that are friendly to business. So, I think the county should do its part to encourage. I, I heard the candidate for city council, Scott Furlegame, talk about childcare. Another critical issue to, if a business wants to locate here, they want a friendly business environment. They also need workers and workers need childcare. So, those are all issues that could be addressed by the county. And, and I don't have a specific proposal, but I think those are things that the county should be looking at.
Okay. Uh, Lance, you're next on this one.
Again, I go back to the taxpayer and the commission choosing what, what the county needs and what they don't need. I think the businesses coming in want, want lower property taxes and lower taxes. And the county, I don't think, should be picking the winners and losers in economic development. And I think the city has programs and stuff. I think they should be working with, with the city and, and searching out the best programs and incentives there. But I don't think, I don't like it when we put it on the backs of, backs of the taxpayers.
Okay. Um, John?
As far as the county, I think one thought I have is the county can be the conduit for all communities throughout the county in assisting any one of them, big or small, in whatever may come their way. And it's, it's infrastructure that county provides for all those cities that any business looking here and wants to locate, that's an important part of a functioning business, so. That's the first thing the county can do. And I don't know, if we could collaboratively work together, and I've talked to a few people. We even talked about this with the lady that manages the, the city's, I forget the name of it, vision. The city of Minot and through her, her name will come to me in a little bit, is, no, it's Convention and Visitors Bureau. I don't know what the name of it is right now again.
Oh, Stephanie Shane Rock?
Shane Rock has, went to these smaller cities and, and visited with me about it. And this is what I recommended and she's doing it. And that's a collaborative effort where you can identify certain things in communities throughout this county. Yeah, a lot of people are going to come here and stay in Minot for activities and events. But Minot can be the one that helps tell people, here's what's going on outside of this city that we're learning more people are interested in. That's good for everybody. That's just one way to collaborate between the, the county and a, a large city and all the smaller cities is using the county for that kind of conduit, both for that types of events and businesses. What I have thought for many years that has concerned me about economic development is that it seems like we compete against each other within our own county with all of our money. Why do we do that? And it's because we want to lay claim to this business established in my town. I look at it as the county, if it establishes in a small town and still provides income and jobs for the county, that's what we should be doing.
Okay. Uh, Alan?
Well, as I've stated before, it really concerned me when last year, there was $30 billion worth of economic development going to be going on in this state. And the fourth, fourth largest community, the, probably the fourth largest county didn't even get a mention or a handshake or an eyebrow raised about it. I think, I think for economic development, for the county, for the region, we, we need to work together with the cities, with the economic development committees that we have out in these smaller cities and build an attitude of business-friendly. Come here and we will do what we can to help you get established. Put together a friendly business attitude that is inviting to businesses that want to, want to develop and want to come. It's been mentioned a number of times about the road system and how that, how important that is. And that is really important. Have a good road system that leads to and from the communities to, to enhance the economy. It's been mentioned about the Southwest bypass. With what's going on with the hospital out on 37th Avenue, that Southwest bypass is going to become more and more important. And that hospital opens up next year, it's, there's going to be a lot of business, a lot of trucks and, and traffic on that road. And the sooner we can get that Southwest bypass going, the better off we're going to be for this community. And that alone will help with economic development.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I think the next one will talk about kind of a similar, what Alan just talked about. What can be done to improve traffic around Minot and coming into Minot, including the bypass you mentioned. And I know Lance, you were talking about traffic safety. So, what, what do you see we can do about, about that within the county and especially coming into Minot with the new hospital?
I've held a CDL for most of my life, so I've had a commercial driver's license. And, and we always need to look at the roads from a truck driver's point of view. And that would keep it a lot safer and stuff, because if they're, they're safe on the road, there's much more room and stuff for the smaller, smaller cars and stuff. But it seems like we're doing it backwards a lot of times. Like the hospital, I mean, we should have been thinking ahead 20 years ago. That's probably the first bypass that should have been built is around the Southwest corner to get from 2 to 83. And I'm not blaming the commission or whoever, a lot of times it's the state. But it seems like that in town should have been probably the first part of the bypass that was built. And we're building it the last and, and who knows how it's going to turn out. And the hospital's a big part of that and they need to get to the hospital in, in a rapid, rapid pace to get there.
John, you're next on this one.
Yeah, I have been sitting on a committee for the past couple of years. It just got completed with some public meetings held out at the experiment station here recently, talking about just what he's talking about. And we had some, myself and the city engineer of Minot and three DOT people, some business, um, department heads that are into trucking, help us discuss what we need to do. And you're right, we should have done a lot, long ago. Alan was on the highway committee a few years ago with me. And we first started talking about it, probably six, seven years ago. And that probably wasn't soon enough either, but. And that probably wasn't soon enough either, but that was before the hospital had started and those things. So it was looked at, but now was the time. And in those discussions, it was discovered the city of Minot's got some issues they got to work out as far as another north-south route that's going to bring it up to the area where the hospital is going to be. And then further out, County Road Seventeen is probably going to have to be improved and may somewhere in between there become the bypass, the south and west bypass for the city of Minot that will separate heavy traffic from cars. So it's in process and we are already working with a DOT at North Dakota with intersection improvements and stuff that are going to happen at intersections, County Road Fourteen and Seventeen, and also County Road Seventeen and Highway Two and Fifty-two, so.
Okay, Alan.
Well, twenty years ago, the hospital wasn't thinking about going where it's been, where it's going now. They've been working on that for what, three years now? So I think six years ago, they were talking about putting a hospital there. To develop a road system around the area to service the hospital and to service the county and to service the community, don't happen that fast. You don't get the money that fast. Even if you could design it and, and get the decisions made that fast, you don't have the money that fast to do it. So we've been working on it for a while. When I was on the commission before, we started looking at that bypass. There's still some decisions that have to be made on that. But once it's, once the decisions are made and the, and we get the money to get it done, it's going to be a good bypass. And it's going to facilitate the farm traffic and truck traffic around this community and direct, direct stuff to the hospital so that it has good services as well.
All right, Jason.
I don't have a lot to add to this. I mean, we've got stakeholders, whether it's from drivers like Lance spoke about or an engineer like Alan talked about, and, and John has been sitting on a committee. I think the wheels are in motion to improve traffic, in particular on the southwest bypass. And the stakeholders are there and it does take time, so. But I would certainly be in favor of that project and, and improving safety and getting the, the big truck traffic away from the, the center of the populated areas.
All right. This is another community submitted question. So they're asking, since the state has taken over county's social services expenses, why hasn't there been a reduction in county taxes? Why aren't taxpayers seeing this relief? And this is a question from the community. And we'll start with John.
Well, that's a good question. I would, the social services used to be a big part of our budget. And so, yeah, the mills haven't dropped as much as what it costs to run that system when, when it, the state took over. But it's still not without cost and, and concern. I don't know. The county has a mill levy cap in place, so that kind of forces us to manage our mills to some degree. And it's just the tendency of people that when you free up some money, there's always other requests for it. So no excuse. I mean, we could have cut more costs probably than we did. But then you hear all these questions coming, why isn't this being done or salaries what they are and stuff? So it, it's, it creeps back in. Yes, the state's funding most social services and no, the people didn't receive or didn't see that complete cut in their taxes. But it certainly is a lot less costly than it would have been if it was being run by the county. I'm not going to say I'm totally one hundred percent happy with the state running it yet, even though the cost is being borne by the state. Programs have probably not been as efficient as we could have been. I don't know where it's headed in the future.
Okay, Alan, you're next.
Well, I was on the commission when the social services were starting to be taken over by the state. And it was, at first it was a little bit of it creeping in and it didn't affect the ours, ours tax base. And it's, it just kept growing and growing. And the whole program was changing because, based on what the state was doing. But the, we didn't see, we didn't see the reduction in the costs as fast as what they were making the changes. Now, I'm not familiar with the last couple of years on this, but both John and I questioned what was going on with this state taking over the social services and, and what it's going to do to our taxpayers. We still have to supply the rooms and the facilities for these people. The state is running the program, but we're supplying the rooms and facilities for it. So there's some costs associated there. So I don't know if we can cut them any further than what's been done. We have to look at that and see what, what more the state's going to demand, because I don't think they're done changing things yet, so.
Okay, Jason.
You know, I, I think that issue is, the larger issue is when the state tries to do things, in this case to take over human services, why don't the local taxpayers see a reduction in their property taxes? And you could say the same thing for other efforts the legislature has made to reduce property taxes by taking on larger portions of the schools share. And then the local people say, well, we still didn't see a reduction. I, I wish I had a solution for that. I can understand the frustration of the legislatures, the state legislature to actually want to see that trickle all the way down to the taxpayers. I know, I mean, like John said, what, what have the challenges been had they not taken that over? Because that would have been just that much more pressure on the county budget. Certainly having the energy boom, the retention of employees took a lot more money than it used to take. They're, you know, and, and the county has done an excellent job with that. And so maybe some of those dollars were put towards retaining employees in other areas. But I'll be anxious to see what the legislature does with property tax and see if there are. I'm certainly a fan of local control, but I certainly also get that any relief they do provide, they want to make sure the taxpayers see it.
Lance.
I guess I got a lot more questions than answers on this one, but I mean, I wonder why, it never seems to be cheaper if the state's running it. I wonder why they took it over. I guess Mike, I have a lot more questions and answers on this question. But it doesn't seem like it was a very good idea, well thought out. Although it maybe saved Ward County, it probably costs the state taxpayers more money in the long run.
Okay, we're getting down to the hour here, seven fifteen. So I think we're going to just do one final round and we'll just let you make closing comments. You know, talk about whatever you want and I'll give you two minutes since we do have some time here. So you can have up to two minutes for your closing comments. And we'll, we start with Alan this time.
No question first? No question?
Why, why should we vote for you?
Well, I'm, I enjoyed my time on the commission. I would enjoy it again. I, I, like I said, I'm fiscally responsible. I take everything and look at it pretty closely when I'm, when I'm involved with it. I want to represent all of the people in this county and get, move the county along. I'm especially interested, as I've said, in economic development. But the issues that come up with social services and the roads and all of that, issues that come with the county are important to me and, and to the citizens of this county. Hope to make this community a better place to be and a better place to grow. And I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
All right. And next up is Jason.
I guess I just want to tell those that don't know me a little bit about me. I consider myself a good listener. In my time running the Minot Police Department, I dealt with a number of problems, whether it was crime problems, whether it was staff problems, whether it was dealing with tough budgets. I have the experience that I, from that, that I think that I can apply to being a commissioner. I'm passionate about, our county, I'm passionate about making sure that people have an ombudsman in their commissioners to listen to what their concerns are, to take them seriously and to try and, and make lives better for them. I'm a conservative fiscally and, but I also believe in excellent public service. And I would demand that from myself and I would demand that from the county to its citizens. So I would ask again for the people to support me in the upcoming election.
Lance.
I'm certainly the different candidate up here. I haven't been in public service and my number one concern would be the taxpayers in the county and every hundred percent of the county, whether they're rural or urban. And I, I just want to give them the opportunity to vote for somebody different if they think there should be a change or whether they think there should be. I, I'm working for a living yet and everything I would do would be towards the county and I'd work hard for the county to make sure their tax dollars are spent right. And as long as, and, and along with that, keeping the, the elections and the highways and everything else that goes with the counties in tight budget fiscally, so.
All right. Lastly, John.
I guess I've been a business owner almost since I got out of high school. And in either farming or we have a small construction business too. I think that gives me a, a perspective that I bring to the commission versus some that hasn't had that opportunity. And I always try and weigh my decisions carefully, do as much homework as I got time for before I make a decision. And I think that leads me to make decisions probably a little differently. We're all different in our own ways and we are what we are based on what we've done in our life. And I think I bring that perspective of caution and making decisions and carefully weighing the taxpayers' money as if, as if it were mine and the repercussions of it if you make bad decisions. So I hope I've done that in the past. I'm conservative as well financially. And, and I'm also concerned about protecting our rights in what limited capacity we have as county commissioners and what's been going on the past few years. And I would stay focused on those issues going forward and, and do the best we can to promote our whole county and our region. Because this is one of the major counties in the region to improve not only our lives, but people around us. So I'd ask for your support to continue to do that.
All right. Well, that concludes the event tonight. Thanks, everybody, for tuning in. Have a good night.